Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Cafferty. I'll be chairing these proceedings at the Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals. And bring their meeting to order. I'll take a moment to explain the zoning board of appeals function. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We've been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston, and we perform this service to the best of our abilities on a volunteer basis. The other board members are Anthony Pantone.
Mary Newbauer.
Donna Martin.
Donna Martin. There will be a period for public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members or other members of the audience. Professional demeanor is expected. And with that, closing the meeting. First item on the agenda, if I can find the agenda. Is the approval of the minutes from March 10. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll second.
Okay, Donna. Who made the motion? Are there?
Me, Sandy.
Okay. All business. Is Catherine's? Oh, all in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Apologize. There you go. Hello, how are you?
Good.
Good. Would, just because we did this virtually the last time, just would you mind coming up, stating your name and address for the record and just give us a little bit of a rundown of what you want to do? Just for the new audience members. Do you mind?
Yeah.
That'd be great. What are you going to do from there?
Did we have no ones on virtually?
You should come. She should come to the mic.
Yeah. You got a mic over here.
Everything's changed. Nobody gave me any click notes.
Okay, none of those.
Can you test it?
Hi.
Yeah.
My name is Kate Doobie. I live at 49 Rine Street. And I want to put a shed on the big lot next to my house at 47 Rine. No, 41, 45, 42.
And so, my understanding is that is a separate lot, not existing?
Correct. There is a lot line.
Okay. All right. We all remember this application?
Yes.
We are, it has been presented to us by, by the building department staff as an area variance, and so we're going to treat it as an area variance. So, questions that anybody on the board might have about this at this point? Just as a reminder, the shed is being placed in such a way where it meets all required setbacks and front yard and side setbacks. So, that's good. I just want to ask, and if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Is there anybody here to speak on this application? Or maybe? All right.
Is there anyone on?
Or in, in virtual world? Hello? Anybody out there? Except, it should just be an ongoing process for this tag which still apparently has not happened.
No, people want to speak on a different topic.
Okay, so no one wants to speak on it. So, what I'm going to suggest, being that you're familiar with this application, clarify a few things from the last meeting. It is an area variance, meets all the setbacks. It's a contiguous piece of property. So, I'm going to entertain somebody who would like to make a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mary? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Your application for your area variance, but the shed is in truth. Can you stay with us for the rest of the meeting? No guilt. You're going to get all that from the building department. I love landmarks. It's a dozen coffee.
Yes.
Okay. Onward and upward. New business. John and Joanne Matthews. Are you in the house? There you are. I just drove by your house. At least I thought I drove by it. I'm pretty sure I did. Anyhow, would you like to briefly state your names and your address for the record?
My name is Joanne Matthews. I live at 120 New York Avenue. And I have a lease of property. We are writing down a stipend. I got your pool and the big lot. And we want to put a pool up there for my grandchild family.
Okay. And this is another instance where this is a separate and distinct lot. It's not, but it's contiguous with your property. So, I have a couple of questions regarding this. I saw the sketch and I saw the sketch, so just to be clear, the pool's placement meets all the setbacks requirements?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Yep.
It's a building lot.
Yes.
The pool is 60 by 28. It's a building lot.
Yes.
And because you're putting a pool there, I'm assuming that it's going to be completely fenced?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Does anybody, that was the question that I had. Does anybody on the board have any questions specifically?
So, I'm just, I have just a question. I'm looking at the, this is the first time I'm looking at the application tonight. So, the house and the drive area is next to the pool. Are they two separate lots or is that one big lot?
That's one big.
That's the neighbor's lot. Their lot.
This is their. Right there. Yes.
That's the lot.
Oh, okay.
A little confusing. Yeah.
Sorry about that. That's me. And it's above ground, correct?
Yes.
If I can remember from the application. And one other question. Judging from the quick review, it is a qualifying lot, building lot, right?
Oh, yes.
It could have a house built.
Yes.
Yep. So, my, my, my guess is, is that you would prefer to keep it as a separate lot?
Yes. Yes. Because we're not getting any younger. We're getting older and if there's
Yes. Something happens and we got something we could sell.
Understand that it's an asset.
Yes.
And you clearly don't have, you clearly don't have any on your current lot.
Oh, no.
No. Okay. Anything else? Anybody have anything else? Is there anybody here in the public or in virtual land, lest we forget them?
Donna.
Pardon?
Just don't know the question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of the fencing that's going to be around the lot. How, what, how tall and?
Well, that's by New York State Code.
Okay.
Believe it has to be at least 10 feet high.
Yes. Yeah, it'll be that. Yes.
Second. Yeah, that, that's the building department.
Yeah, they put that right around the perimeter anyway.
Yeah, they still have to apply for permit.
Yeah.
Up the code.
All word, basically.
Yeah, but they don't need, they don't need a variance for the fence.
No.
And you don't even need a permit.
It used to.
No, but the pool has regulations that require.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Not the Russian. I'm going to ask members of the public, is there anybody here in the public that would like to speak on this application? Any neighbors? No? Virtual world? Is there, I think there was somebody that maybe wanted to speak? Nope, not anymore. Speaker forever holds.
Is there anybody in the virtual world that would like to speak to this topic? Send a chat message or raise your hand. Okay. Nobody, nope.
We got to get a better angle. I'm terrible.
Looks like you should wear, could he say? Head on chat. I'm just sorry.
Just trying, this, this is dry stuff. I'm trying to create some levity.
What do you mean? We need to?
Yes. So, with hearing no other people wanting to speak, is there anything else you'd like to say?
No.
Oh. Okay. You can go ahead and sit down. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All questions pretty much answered. Can I entertain a motion from the floor to approve or deny?
I'm motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Just write the symbol. I'll second. I have a cooperative board.
There'll be some very happy grandchildren.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Yeah, moving right along.
Easy.
Now. Thank you. You're welcome.
Enjoy. If it ever snows, love. Enjoy your pool.
If it ever stops snowing.
Exactly. Have an ice break.
Don't invite me to a pool party.
Okay. Yeah. Or this would be called the main event.
The main, the main event.
So, yeah. So, this next applicant, we're going to ask them to come up, just so everybody here knows and everybody in virtual world knows, there'll be a public comment period after the presentation. Right now, this is a presentation so that we can better understand what the applicant is attempting to do. So, we're going to call up the owner and applicant Alex. Oh, man.
Elegant.
Okay. How do you pronounce that?
Elegant.
Elegant. Okay. Good. All right.
Elegant.
Elegant.
Very, it's not that. It's tough. It's not a thematic. Try learning that when you're a kid, Ferrari.
Somewhere where the virtual world could also see it.
Yeah, they're good at the podium, seems like.
We did bring a laptop.
Yeah, you want to do a screen share?
Is that something we can do? Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, you could do a screen.
We need a little distance getting set up for you.
All right. We'll take a moment while you guys have a little.
It's happening here.
Everybody know where it is?
What's that?
Usually an easel hanging around here somewhere. Everybody know where it is?
Well, if they're going to, if they're going to, yeah.
We might be towards.
So. What email should I send this link to?
Jeff.
Jeff?
Jeff.
J E P H.
At my Utah Tech.
I can't.
At my Utah Tech.
There's not one in there.
No, I checked, I checked.
C H I T E C T U R.
Dot com?
Yes.
After we're done, my daughter's gonna throw.
Good idea. Just want to keep in the lines.
She draws better looking buildings with some designers there.
I'll be two stick fingers.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's just the lot.
No, she just pointed out that that's going to be.
Yeah. No, no, that's across the street. And that's just another lot that they have. They own. Like, the cultural center is like right here.
This has been for the gas station.
Then it, you.
Yeah, it used to be a gas station.
Share his screen. You can promote him to.
You have to promote him to be a panelist.
Getting promotions.
But I think he has to join first.
How long is that going to take?
I, I would just click the link.
Okay. Takes six.
Join? I thought there was no purchase.
Taking flight of business, I'm for sure.
Yeah. And next to it is Camelot or something. So, and then we're doing the Robin. The whole Prince of Peace.
Do you get email?
Yes, I do. It's connecting.
All, that whole area, that whole complex, it's the end of birds.
Real.
It used to be the area code of Woodstock.
Yeah.
Before there was, back before there was numbers. Yeah, well, that's, that's, that used to be the code, the area code of Woodstock was real.
Oh, yeah.
Before there was area codes.
Mine was, when I was a kid, it was all over eight.
Really?
That was.
And that was before I could use a phone. Before I was even born.
Yeah, no, we're all.
Yes.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yes.
But, yeah. Speaking of old, I still have a nine one.
So do I. I have the same number.
I gotta add a cell phone, still nine one.
Getting, getting directions back in the day were the greatest. And so, you'll see the sign and you keep going.
Yes. Two blocks past the.
There's a white house.
Thank God for Google.
If you want, I mean, you like the program machine, maybe. That's the link. You'll take my phone.
Do you need Wi-Fi?
No, I do. I'm connected.
Okay.
You didn't do it this way for the planning board, man?
We did.
You didn't?
Planning, and then we were virtual on heritage and history. So, yeah, same picture.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Or you can go to the shoot's website, go through a pledge, click on the link.
I was saying the passcode is intro. Yeah. Does anyone have like a live link?
Exactly. Genderism and. Beginning of this franchise, the actual people who showed up.
Yeah. Well, that's, that was the whole thing with the, the abandonment of the, the public hearing for the peristrat extension abandonment. Like, all that stuff went so bad, had to do it all over again.
You probably got to mute your.
Are you on that?
Mute yourself in the video or I'll do.
Yeah, yeah. Mute your laptop or else it creates crazy feedback.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to promote you now.
You'll get demoted.
Okay, so I promoted you.
So, join hash?
Yes. Who can start sharing with someone else to share? We hit all panels?
I guess it's only two of you are the only panelists, so. The other people aren't panelists. The other people that are, that are in there.
Promoted them.
Oh. You should have only promoted him to.
Whatever, as long as he can share. Hopefully, the other seven people on are not going to like photobomb the presentation.
The host has to save the participant.
Screen sharing. So, the host has to, hey, boy, new technology.
Sure.
There. Holy, holy. Wow. Okay. All right. I love when stuff works.
Yeah.
That's your screen. Yeah.
I take that back.
Is that your screen? No, that's.
Oh, you're viewing his screen.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I think.
I've lost the meaning. Yep, that's you.
Yes.
And then you have to stop sharing your screen or.
I did. I put all panels down.
Okay. There we go. All right.
Yay.
Excellent. Here we are. Well, thank you for having us this evening. Joseph Manood with Manood Architecture. I would be jumping all the way up. I was in the beginning, he's the owner of the projects. What we have here before you tonight are actually five projects. You're probably familiar with the former, who's the synagogue and church, which is the project that we're looking at right now on the screen, which is yours.
So. That's the, the old bridge water? No.
No.
That, okay.
Which? It's, it's across the street from a Beal, on the other side of the Beal Street on West Union. The church, it's on the top of a hill there. Yeah.
Got it. Okay. So, that, that's the property I think we'll start discussing. So, this, this parcel, other parcels attached to it. And first, we have all the properties here. And so, there are a lot of existing non-conformities, especially with the existing building for lot area and parking and things of that nature. Well, I'd like to actually give back the parking. So, I've done some calculations here just based on the building alone. There's, is that 78? Eighty-two hundred and ten square feet. The zoning code calls for one per four, one space per four occupants. Based on that and.
Retail?
Uh, no, no, no. The under, I read, I read the zoning code and it's for places, houses of worship. One per four.
Yeah.
So, so with regard to that. That's, well, no, no, I'm. That's under the old use. Yes, let me, if you just allow me, allow me a little latitude here. Okay. So, under the old use, you had that amount of space. And with the calculations of square footage per person, which is 15 square feet per person. Based on the 8,210 square feet, we have 547 people permitted at one point to be in that building. When we take that and divide it by four, we have 136 parking stalls. Now, clearly, 136 parking stalls were never allocated to this church specifically on the property, but likely elsewhere. So, with this application, although we're asking for 38 variants, 38 spaces for variants, we're actually giving back 98 to the city. So, just, and that's just basic mathematics. So, I just want to open it with that and say that we're requesting 38 spaces out of those that are at total 136. That would have been required. For a house of worship. That's correct.
Yeah.
So, we're going, taking the old use, what was the requirement to the old use? And the new use that we have, which obviously has lesser requirements. And so, it's actually give back overall. And, you know, that's, that's just mathematics. So, I'll just offer that to you as a, as an initial for this project.
And the new, I'm sorry, the new use is?
The new use is going to be a cafe on the first floor, retail, which is required by code, zoning code. And then the upper floor would be split into four apartments. Okay, so this is under, this is under the mixed use overlay? Correct. Yeah. So, it's got to be commercial. That is correct. Thank you, sir. With regard to the four apartments, three are permitted. So, we are requesting variance for one additional apartment for this location. And we have split up the upper levels. We're going to maintain the existing architecture that's there. And they'll actually be pretty grand spaces. The main level obviously is going to be a cafe or some sort of retail use. We have redesigned the entire site, just to sort of go through this a little bit with you so you can see the whole picture here. We've redesigned this site. This is the existing retaining wall. We provided some new steps. We provided an exterior ADA accessible lift to get up to this space, which is the existing platform area at the top. And then what we've tried to do with this, and the other thing that I'm looking for, a interpretation, I suppose, is the floor area ratio. We read from the code that the floor area ratio includes the first floor. We don't technically have a first floor. What we did was we raised the building. And the purpose of raising the building was to accommodate parking spaces on site. So, when we calculated our floor area ratio, which is part of your application tonight, we included the ground floor because that was our interpretation of it. But it doesn't seem proper to me. And I just wanted to ask the board for that interpretation at some point. Could you go through the lot across the street? Just so I'm clear. Yes, sir. This is, this, this the old Seventh Day Adventist Church? Yes. Exactly.
What do you mean by you raised the building? Like, are you?
You have an image?
You're using the existing, you're, you're re-adapting that existing structure or you're building a new structure?
No.
So, this is a second structure?
We're building, there's five lots.
Uh huh.
This is our first lot that remains. That's the existing building. This is our first lot, that remains, that's the existing building. On this lot, we are proposing a new, new structure on both of these lots, which will be split by a firewall. And then there are two lots across the street which are doing almost the exact same thing.
It would, it would probably be helpful to show them like a bigger picture of.
Yeah, good point. Nah, nah, nah.
Yeah, actually.
It doesn't say anything about new structure.
What I would love to see is a, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes, that makes more sense, right?
Okay, so here's the existing, here's the existing church.
Which, right.
Okay, this is the side lot, and this is a three-family unit and a three-family unit, another three-family unit and another three-family unit. So that's the entire, uh, development, this, of one, each, each individual site. As you can see, we have the retaining wall here, this is our new lift, this is our new way to get up, uh, with the steps. Steps currently come up this way and it's on the property, so we try to clean everything up. Pedestrian access, ingress, egress, same on this lot, this becomes one way through the lot. Jeff, could you please give us a little bit more, uh, area there? There you go. So, we're able to cross over from, from this street to this street, simply either by walking or through vehicle, and then we're able to get additional spots underneath. So when I say we raised the building, we literally raised these two structures.
What you meant is you're putting parking.
That is correct.
So there's no use of, it's not, uh, like, any dwellings down there?
Right, so that's where the floor area ratio question comes into play. Because if we were not to do this, obviously, these would be sitting down on the ground. Right, so it kinda seems unfair to have a, that space that's not actually utilized for.
And that's where the old parking lot was for the?
They had a few cars up there, but the terrain was really kind of rough, like, you know, if they parked maybe four or five cars there, that was tough.
Yeah, actually, like, if I could show you guys, the parking lot was just like a sliver, it was like, like a little scoop, and then this was all dirt, this is all dirt over here. Um, this is all dirt as well.
It was like a gravel road.
Yeah, like, yeah.
Correct.
What are these jiddies?
Uh, what's that, around here? Oh, these are, these are trees, so this is part of our.
It's a, it's a.
This looks like a bar's cone. Also, I, I wanted to point out that the church, we're gonna, we're gonna be looking to restore it to its original condition, so we wanna keep that old, like, feel that the church has. So we're looking right now, we're in discussions with trying to get as many old pictures of the church as possible right now with a, another company that we're working with. What, what was the name of that, that company, the historical?
Maria Halden with Archaeological and Historic Resources.
Yeah, so we want to.
Chip out on this, okay.
To its original condition as well. Is it covered, is the? I mean, I, I know you guys, there's, there's a huge number of variants is proposed in this whole, um, process, so, um, is the church covered under any kind of historic requirements for the historic preservation?
Mark.
Well, it is a pre-existing nonconformity, so by default, it exists. So changing it.
Yeah, no, pre-existing nonconforming is something different, I'm just wondering if it's, uh, if it's in a historic district that requires certain.
Yes, it is, and that's why, you know, we, that's why we're before heritage and, and landmarks.
That's where it's good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it a designated, uh, landmark by the, um, Parks Department?
That I don't believe.
Actually, it is not.
It's private.
It's not.
All right, it doesn't, it doesn't matter if it's private or not to be a designated landmark by the Parks Department?
No, it's not a designated landmark by the.
As far as we know, it's not on, it's not on the list.
Most old churches are, which is what I'm trying to say.
So you're saying it's not a listed property? We don't have anything stating that it's listed, however, we do have, like we said, we, we.
But the goal is to, yes. Okay.
We contracted our A H R S to go through this process with us.
And to restore it, at, at least on the facade, I mean, I would like to keep it in the original spirit and maybe bring in some stained glass.
And that was the hopes of the heritage landmarks as well.
Yeah.
So, I showed you this image so you understand what we meant when we first discussed this, uh, having really no floor on the first, the ground floor, and all the floors above. So that gets us into our floor area ratio. But let's try to keep this simple, uh, back and back down to just the plan itself. Okay, so we'll take a look at just the church property, and this is the one? No, that's not.
We're going back to the church.
Yes, please. So let's discuss that one in thoroughly with respect to, uh, the variances that are being requested. Jeffeth, is it possible to enlarge that just a bit?
Yes.
And here we go.
Part.
Mr. Kitchen. Did I unplug you?
All right. No promotion. Here, man. I thought you were unplugged.
All right, Jeffeth, if we could slide this to the side.
Sure.
Thank you. So, existing, uh, lot area is seventy-five, seven thousand four hundred and fifty-five square feet, proposed is the same. Minimum requirement's five thousand, so obviously that's existing nonconforming. Uh, the lot widths are what they are, again, existing nonconforming. Lot depths are not applicable here, uh, the area dwelling unit, again, not applicable. So when we come down to the others, uh, we have, uh, maximum building height thirty, uh, thirty-five, two and a half, uh, is what we've got as required, thirty-eight is existing. So we're looking for variants because it's existing nonconforming, approximately three feet.
This is for the new builds?
No, this is for the existing, as it exists. So this is just for the lot itself. None of these are used variances, they're all just lot area.
So, I have a question, so let me ask a question. So, all of these variances are a result of an existing nonconforming use? So I, what are, did it lose its use? Did it lose it, is that why you need to vary?
No, it has nothing to do with the use, is, uh, the, the.
So.
It goes with the property, not the use or the owner.
So that, the, no, actually, in the city of Kingston, if the property falls out of its use, which was pre-existing nonconforming for two consecutive years, it loses its existing nonconforming use status.
Okay, that's interesting.
At which point, you re-enter at the current code.
Interesting.
Right? So that's what I'm getting at. How long has it been since this church was used as a church? Uh, well, I think up until.
When did you purchase?
Uh, yeah, maybe a few months ago. Okay, so it's still an existing. Yeah. No?
I don't think so.
Well, I mean, I, I, I remember paying for it.
All right.
Okay.
We could get better answers to that.
At this moment, I ask the public to just hold, because you're gonna have an opportunity to rush on in later on. And let's not have any crosstalk because that way, that's how things sort of get a little, sure, get a little wonky.
But you're talking about use, right? Here, you, this is an area.
These are all area variants.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Except for one. Right.
So, um, so that point is valid but not applicable here, right? But what I'm saying, what I, what, so why, if the big building is already pre-existing nonconforming, then why are you needing a height variance for the existing?
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
That was, that was a whole.
You don't need a variant, that building is already there.
Yeah, so I'm trying to see if there's some of these variances that you don't even need.
Or, or.
If, if, that's based on the premise, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's based on the premise that it still has its existing nonconforming use status intact, which is apparently based on some, you know, differences of opinion, it might not, sure, that's subject to check.
Well, and, but that's only if they wanted to continue to use it as a place of worship, worship.
Yes, I guess the, um.
They wanna change the use anyway, so it's kind of a move.
Yeah, it is a somewhat of a move point now, that you're talking about changing the use, because at that point, it's not an existing. Exactly. Yeah, I would.
Sometimes what we'll do is we'll come before zoning, just to clean up the paperwork, just so that everybody has the proper documentation of what, what is there, why it's there, and it's often easier just for everybody to understand, and then variants is granted under that premise, if that makes sense.
You've given me a headache.
I just, I, the one question is, you're not planning on making that building any higher?
No, there's no change to that.
Okay.
No, the exterior envelope stays as it is.
All right.
All right.
All right, so we're continuing with this.
So continuing with the bulk table, we have a developmental coverage. Eighty percent at seven thousand four hundred and fifty-five square feet is five thousand nine hundred and sixty-four. The existing, we have forty-six eighty-five for the developmental coverage. And, uh, the proposed is actually a little bit less because we're getting rid of some of the buildings that were appendages to it that are really bad shape, so that drops it down to forty-two sixty-two, all right, with a difference of four hundred and twenty-three square foot change. So, it's still above.
So, another area.
Uh, but that's not an American, that, I'm sorry, I'm, I misspoke. There is no variance, area variance for that. Floor area ratio is where we come into play on this one, and this one is applicable because it is on the base floor of the grade.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, please.
I, there, there is, there is a maximum lot, there are a maximum lot coverage. Bulk use table, so, and you're approximating, you know, almost fifty percent, not quite.
Was it, was the square footage?
We have eighty, eighty percent. I'm sorry, on, on a developmental coverage, yes, we have eighty percent coverage.
Yeah, that might clear, that actually, you, you can cover eighty percent?
That's the match.
That's the match?
And he's covering a little bit less.
Just a little bit less, okay, so you're right at the. Made it maximum lot coverage, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Uh, usable open space, four hundred square feet is required, and obviously, we have an existing nonconforming lot. That's kind of where we're at, there's nothing required for that. Uh, we do have, uh, square footage and area on the space to be used. The floor area ratio is where we do come into this, so for this property, we have one, two variances being requested, and then we'll get into the parking. Building height, three feet, and minimum usable open, sorry, floor area ratio, uh, of point zero four is the variance. So we have one point, is it one point one zero as it exists, one point zero four is being reduced, so it's a difference of point zero six, and so we're seeking point zero four of the floor area ratio as a variance. So in this case, what exists, exists, we are making it better by reducing the footprint, but we're still not there. And to take any more of the building would detract from its heritage and its history. Jeffeth, would you mind just raising this up a little bit so we can go to the parking? Thank you.
You're welcome.
With regard to the parking and its current uses, or, excuse me, our proposed uses, we have fourteen standard stalls that are required, plus one handicap stall, for a total of fifteen. And that's just for the commercial side. First floor. From the residential standpoint, nine stalls are required. Zero, um, handicap stalls in this case, and a total of nine stalls being required just for the residential. So for this property, for its uses that we're proposing, we would need a variance of twenty-four spaces.
Because they're saying.
Yes, because there is no parking on the site.
Okay.
Nor was, but if you recall from my calculation earlier, there are a hundred and thirty-eight spaces. Virtual, be that, may that be public parking or what have you. Okay, so that is a pullback, right? If this was occupied as a, as a, as a house of worship, you would need all those spaces, no longer is. So I hope that makes sense. Would you please bring us to the other one, unless, would you like to have questions for just this one? You would like to step through each site? Or see them all?
Um. Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah.
Get the presentation fluid, Jeffeth, would you please? Uh, go to the next site.
That means that everybody's gotta, like, make notes.
Okay, so here we are on, uh, lot twenty-four.
It's a big project, but I think it'll be a great project, so.
Well, we're presenting it as one project, there are actually five separate projects because they're separate lots. But we felt, uh, when we spoke with, uh, all of the knowledgeable powers in the city of Kingston, they felt this was the best approach, so we're trying to use that for you as well.
Well, it's, it's, they encourage things not to be segmented. We wanted to look at the whole thing as its impact.
Exactly. And that was our approach too, uh, to the design and all of it. So, on, on this lot, which is lot twenty-four, correct? Uh, this is, this is twenty-five, excuse me, this is twenty-four, this is lot twenty-five. So blow this up for me, please, Jeffeth.
These are on the same side of this.
Yes, yes, the, this one and the next one that I'm going to discuss are all on the same side of the street, they're all contiguous lots. So let's just go through the variances that were needed rather than those that are not.
Right.
Okay, lot width, three point eight, or three foot eight inches, okay, so forty foot, thirty-six point four exists, we can't change it.
So you can just three foot.
The bottom line number. Okay, so maximum building height, uh, half a story, uh, thirty-five feet, uh, three stories, so we do need that for a half story, but again, we're raising the building to accommodate parking. And then the last one is the floor area ratio, uh, which is point three two, and that's because we have an undersized lot. So, we kinda get, that's just the way it all works out. If you could move to the, uh, parking for this one, Jeffeth?
All right.
So for parking, we've got, uh, seven required, handicap stall zero, uh, total required is seven, and we are proposing four, so we're able to get four parking stalls on the site, so we would need a variance of three. Can you go to the next one? This is lot twenty-six. Which is the adjacent lot, zoom back out, please. Just get everyone oriented. So we discussed twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, and now we're discussing twenty-six. So on twenty-six, we have four parking stalls underneath. Blow it up for me again, please.
Bulk table with the.
The bulk table.
All right.
Thank you. So just discussing the variances alone, uh, lot width, five feet. We have a forty foot is required, thirty-five feet is all we have, so requesting five feet for that. And then again, same situation here for the number of stories and feet, uh, point five stories. The other is, uh, point three for the floor area ratio. Let's go to the parking. Again, seven, seven, four proposed, so three are delinquent, so plus three, uh, parking, a variance for three parking spaces there. So that's all one side of the street. We go to the opposite side of the street. We're looking at lot number nine, and so that's split in two directions. So. This is lot nine.
Nine, right?
Jeffeth? Nine and ten. So talking about lot nine, we're able to fit three parking spaces underneath that. If we, and so being ten, this is the, the breakpoint of the property. We go to the, zoom into the bulk table, please. Okay, so the variances that we're seeking for this one, uh, the lot area, it's an undersized lot, five thousand square feet is required, twenty-six oh six is the variance.
So more than half?
Yes.
This is number, this is number four, right?
Number, lot number nine.
Nine?
Yeah, it's just four lots.
Okay. The building height, uh, four foot six inches, one point five stories, maximum permitted is thirty-five, two and a half. We've got thirty-nine, six with four stories, and where we are with that, there are a couple of requirements from planning. Uh, we were, we're accommodating open green space, and so what we did is we created a green roof uh, on top so that the, uh, the residents can utilize that for open space, adding to the available open space in the community. Uh, in doing so, we had to raise that, and we also have a elevator that goes to the top, and we have a rail that goes around the edge, so that's accounting for some of that partial story that we're talking about. Can you please go, Jeffeth, to the parking? So for this spot, again, seven stalls, on this, we were able to get three, so requesting four for this particular one. And let's go to lot number ten, and it's the same story.
That was, you, you were able to find three and you need four?
Correct.
A variance for four.
Very, total of seven required. And again, same story for lot number ten, uh, it's the same type of building, square footage, five thousand square feet. We have, uh, twenty-four seventy-nine, so that's a, a variance of two thousand five hundred and twenty-one square feet. Uh, let's see here, what else do we have? We have thirty-nine, we're actually short by an inch on the uh on the lot width, we have forty feet, it's thirty-nine uh foot eleven inches. And then we're looking at the max story height, same same thing here, thirty-nine, six, four stories, so it's four foot six inches and one point five stories. The floor area ratio, we've got uh two point four eight being proposed, and so we're looking at a variance of one point four eight. Which includes the ground floor, and that's why I asked for the interpretation. Can we include, do we have to include the ground floor with floor area ratio?
I would have to make that determination.
Okay, that would be great, and so that would significantly reduce, right? Or or maybe not even be needed. So that's essentially the presentation for the zoning portion, and I'm happy to take any questions.
So so just in total. With all of these buildings being raised up for parking underneath them, which are creating some of these height variances and all that. You end up needing a total of how many uh there, how many spaces, variances, area variance, or how many spaces?
Stayed at thirty-eight.
Okay, and that's out of a total of what?
Oh, at a total of what we're providing?
At a total, out of a total of what's required with the program.
Uh, we did that per lot, so I just need to do a little bit of math, so we have seven and seven uh for those.
Four, you got twenty-four at the first.
Thank you, yes.
I believe it was fourteen for the commercial.
Twenty-four, four, four, and six.
Sorry about the parking, just parking.
Yes. I'm trying to now.
Those seven, seven for the other ones as well.
Buildings, so overall.
Yeah, I think it's helpful to take a like bigger picture, look at it also when you're going over, because right now, it the area is a lot of dirt. Like across the street, there's no buildings, there's something that exists, it's gravel, and then on the right, it's also dirt, so.
Fifty-two total parking stalls.
And we lose you?
Yep. So out of fifty-two, you need a variance for thirty-eight.
But then if, but then because we're not keeping the religious building, if it were a religious building.
This has been brought up many times, so I feel compelled to have to say. Not that you, not that you're beating a dead horse, although maybe, I'm just, the. We have a lot of houses of worship in the city of Kingston, because, you know, um, it's like they built a lot of church. And and this is a colonial city, built largely before automobiles and what have you.
The capital.
And so so for houses of worship, there's an extraordinary amount of leniency with regard to it, because most people walk to church. So honestly, it doesn't, in in my opinion, it's like, you know, we got it, but. That's a very, very, very generous thing having to do with with uh houses of worship, so, you know, I'm not. I don't look at it as you giving back parking spaces um based on.
Yeah, those those uses are not um comparable.
Right, so that's that's all I'm getting at.
Fair enough.
So let's just, let's just deal with the hard facts, you need fifty-two spaces. And this total, out of all five of these lots and the different buildings that have been built on it, and out of that fifty-two, you need more than fifty percent. Well, whatever it is, it's higher than sixty percent, uh, variance for area variance for parking. Okay, that's, that was the point I was trying to make, so on on everything else. And you'll figure out what to do with it. I mean, it seems to me that it makes sense to try and get as many parking spaces on site and raising the buildings. Um, and allowing for parking underneath makes makes a lot of sense to me if that's the way you were going to do this. Um, but the and and that. Creates a bunch of height. You know, variances and and then um there's the one variance where literally it's a substandard lot. Over fifty percent of a lot area variance, that's a, that's a tough one, but um just thinking out loud, just trying to think through all this. Any other questions that you guys?
I apologize also, I just wanted to clarify also, so the the church had tax exempt religious status, so it was considered a church until the sale. Which was around December thirteenth, so I just wanted to clarify that, even though they were not uh holding uh religious ceremonies in there, it was still considered. They were still paying, there was still tax exempt and still a religious status.
But as Tony pointed out, Tony, Anthony pointed out, it's kind of moot because the whole use is shifted, so.
Yes.
So we're we're dealing with current zoning and what you want to build based on the program, what you need, zoning required, you need, and what variances you need. So how many total variances would you say the project needs, uh, because I couldn't keep count. Well, some of them are minor, I get it.
They they are minor and they are independent, and I don't know that it's the 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 amount of variances as it is, the the use is permitted. And we have existing lots that are not performing, those lots were created before current zoning, so they can't possibly. And that's where the variance, why we're requesting the variances, total, uh, we just count them up.
I believe it was twenty-five.
Twenty-five, there you go.
Twenty-five individual variance.
Over five lots.
Pardon?
Over five lots.
Over five.
Yeah.
One lot width three, one lot width six, they have.
Right, 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 but a total of twenty-five. That's a lot of variances, although admittedly, some of them are very minor, and some of them are created. Because you're solving another problem, uh, so thank you, thank you, I'm just there. So maybe I shouldn't be talking out loud so much, but uh, that's me. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, I have one, um, so. A lot of the variances that you need are basically defined almost entirely based on the use you're trying to do, which is. The amount of area that you're trying to develop, which is what's creating the height problem. I mean, if you're talking about like you, community character, right? Uh, these structures are significantly larger as you're proposing than any of the surrounding structures that are there.
If I may.
That's not a church, don't count, don't count churches.
No, so so that question was raised, asked by the planning board. To provide a block radius of all of the other buildings in the area, and these are by far not larger than many of the other buildings in the area. There's very large structures.
In height, in height?
Yeah, and overall, in width and height and the whole bit.
Well, height, height is my. Fine, block coverage and stuff, it's fine, I'm talking specifically about.
The model or just the rendering?
So on these, we're looking at, you know, total height.
You're looking at four stories, right?
Correct, right.
Well, four stories, because there's a clears, there's a, there's a garage area underneath, right?
But we're still at thirty-five, we're still thirty-five and change, right? So although they may appear tall, but you know, the the church is still taller than all the rest. At the at that.
Pretty typically, that's community, that that's.
But there's other large, large brick buildings. Japheth, can you bring up the overall that we had there?
The Irish Cultural Center is at least this high, which is.
Oh, that's got to go through the support again anywhere, so it's a whole different thing.
So I do understand uh the the thought and the perspective of that, uh, but when we actually put this all together, uh, it became obvious that they aren't. And you're seeing this because these are much emboldened, very focused on them.
For sure.
But the rest of the buildings in the area are within the same conceptual volumetric makeup. Uh, adjacent to these, uh, you know, these are, you know, your typical smaller houses, there's some very small houses, but then there was also some very large buildings, so.
Um. Just share with me the, even though it's, nevermind. It's just not, it's not the purview, I was just going to ask about architectural design.
Back to back, well.
I know, I know.
No, unfortunately, and I don't mean to, you know, it is not our purview to be involved in architectural design. That's not what we're here to do, we're here to deal with area variances and potential use variances. Are the the design and all that stuff is going to get handled by the planning board if it gets that far, and um and uh. Landmarks and all that stuff, as much as I'd like to have a conversation about it because I'm interested in it, it's just not our purview. And can, would everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Regret. All right.
I mean, you know, in in the, for for an area variance, uh, the character of the community is one of the thing, the the things you have to meet.
So. Character, the character of the community. Okay, so yeah, one could go, one could go, one could go take that and define it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that includes architectural design, but really, that's not our, that's not our thing. Uh, it 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 really isn't, I think it's in terms of building massing, definitely part of our purview, you know, stuff like that. Um, but our, but the design, you know, they want to paint it pink.
My side view of the buildings where the church and the other apartments that are being built, what's the. Width in between those two buildings?
Sure.
What we see is a walkway.
That double building has a firewall there right on.
Correct.
They're meant to.
Correct. With the, it's, that's also meant it together with the with the church building or just with the between the chunk?
So where my finger is going along here, that's the separated distance between the two buildings.
Okay.
Okay, so that, this is the extent of the building.
Building, okay.
Right? So we do have, we do have space between this landscape space, green space, et cetera.
That's a cross.
It's not afforded to it, no.
Next, that's next in.
Yeah, and these are, these are lots, uh.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
It's not like one big space between.
Correct, between the church and the other building, but is, isn't one of the buildings has a firewall, so it's.
They all have firewalls, okay, so what we've done is because the firewall, you have to protect at the lot line. So what we did is we designed the buildings so that it looks as one structure. And the firewall will exist from here to here, and that firewall does not go to the grave. That firewall is set up on the first level and goes between the the unit sphere.
Right, so what I'm saying is, is the buildings touch one another, well, these two buildings, that's what I'm talking about.
Her question was the rest of the church, what the. And again, these are rudimentary, they're in computer.
Oh, color.
See, it 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 looks like one building. So they also, uh, we've been before, just just to vet it out, okay, um, segmentation is is terrible thing. So we've been to both heritage and landmarks, and we've also been to planning. So the commentary that came from Heritage Landmark.
This is really helpful.
With respect, there you go, so with respect to that, and we designed, we we put these together at the request of planning board out of our last hearing. So when we had our initial discussions with regard to heritage and landmarks. The question is this, when you are in a historic area. Uh, we are maintaining the existing historic building, and so there's two ways to approach this. Having formerly been the architect record for a city's uh architectural view commission, which through SHPO. Um, you either contrast or you compliment, and complimenting in in the sense of. The style and the building and the period, you're falsifying the history. And so what this allows us to do is say, here's today, here's yesterday, and they both stand equally on their own, and there's no confusion as to. Is that really built then? So they were very happy with uh that perspective uh and the way we that we've approached that. Uh, we were asked again to provide uh perspective views.
Yeah.
From various vantage points on the street. And Japheth, did you find, providing just some of those just to, uh, so they have an understanding?
I like the trees better than the cheesy daisy don't.
That's all vector modeling, so yes.
That's one.
So this is uh obviously viewing from uh.
I think one of the things that that just stuns me about these designs is 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 that. It looks like almost every single building I've ever seen built in South Florida. And 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 I say that.
Do they have records too?
And and I and I and I say that because they utilize this building design um for the purposes of having parking underneath. And then, and it's open, and I think that's part of, that's part of what what, you know, is is striking about it. It it seems to me like if some of that stuff were, where you weren't dealing with actual traffic and everything, was screened off and closed off to make it look more. Of a solid building than a completely open bottom.
We could do.
I'm no, I'm just, I'm just saying, it would look less like that architectural design.
And I I do appreciate that one of the concerns were pedestrian traffic and safety. And so when you start putting those thing elements in there. It becomes an area that can, you know, you can have some some difficulty, right? It is, it is tricky, it's a balance, uh, so.
But I can't get over, you know, I can't get over that 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 look, it's takes me back to my, you know, my teenage years spent in in Pompano Beach and Fort Lauderdale.
Okay. But uh the materials that we're choosing, obviously, they're going to be.
Yeah, they're wood, it's going to be, is there something where you could show them with the with the wood exterior, what what that is going to look like? So it's going to be, it's hardy board?
Yes.
Yes, like a hardy board wood, it's not going to be gray, it's not going to be a big block. We we wanted to feel organic and not uh not like a big concrete block. The the goal was for it to be um sort of like like breathing and living with with wood and with a white contrast.
You need the parking.
Set down on the ground? Yeah, that's great.
Exactly.
It it would be amazing, which without if I didn't have.
So we got a little corbus going on, a little corbusia with the P H D and, you know, raising the building off the off the ground, having the park private, you know.
Does anybody else have any more questions? Okay, so thank you, guys.
Thank you for allowing us to come through you tonight.
I want to open it up because we we still need to get through this. No, I'm just kidding. I I am not, I am, I'm not between the online, uh, the online folks and the here, in here folks, yes, so is there anybody in in the virtual world? Is there anybody in the virtual world that would like to speak? I'm just kidding, so J A Myers, can you unmute yourself or we'll unmute you and state your name and address for the record?
Hi, I'm Joanne Myers, I live at fifty-six Abiel Street, which is that little miniscule little house that you have. Uh, down in the corner, one of your plot moments. And so while I live. Great development, great east, we have uh the church.
Joanne, Joanne, you're, um, either you got a bad connection, you're, you're just, we're getting every other word, it's kind of something.
So I I'm going to go find a headset. So I will come back to you, or could you go to someone else?
Sure.
Yeah, I got it. They don't usually know that that's happening.
Natasha Harsh, could you please, I'm trying to unmute you, okay, there you are.
Okay, uh, yes, thank you for all your, the review of this, is this, are there, are the applications being taken as applications today? Or is this just a presentation?
This is just a presentation, um, this is not an application for the zoning board at this point, is it? That is true, right?
Do you have any idea when it will be an application? Do you have any idea when there will be an application?
Submit the applications for. Yeah, so, um, and before I answer any more questions, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Natasha Harsh, and I own fifty-one West Union.
Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I think I'm a little confused. We made application for this. I understand tonight is presentation that, that we'd be back, either, either come back, either, either.
Applications have been submitted.
Yes.
Yes, you will have.
Applications, these, everything's been submitted. We are here tonight hoping to leave with the variances.
You're kidding, right?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to sound liberal.
You'll be back next month, but there's not gonna be a vote this evening.
Okay.
They just got.
It's just presentation.
Okay. Somebody's members just got your information tonight.
Haven't even looked at these.
That's a lot to look at and make a decision that quick that affects the future of the city.
That was, I'm sorry.
Yeah. What is your address again, Ms. Harsh?
Fifty-one West Union.
Okay, you have any questions, Ms. Harsh?
Uh, no, well, actually, I already asked my one question. I think that I do have an opinion. I think it's way too large a project and reminds me of Ikea instruction. I think it's totally out of keeping with the, with this immediate neighborhood, which is a historic one. That's about, but thank you, I hope that it, I hope this project is downsized considerably.
Thank you, I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Or should we be appreciated? Anybody else?
J A Myers. J A Myers, you there, Joanne?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm here, can you hear me better now?
Wow, you sound like you're right next door.
Joanne, what's your address again, please?
Excuse me, fifty-six Abiel Street, which is right next to the bridge, that little miniscule house that you had outlined. So I, I really want development and good development, but it needs to fit with the character of the community. And this is a historical district, so it needs to really maintain this. And I think this project is a little outsized. But I'm also very concerned about the parking. We had, we have, you had, gave a variance to the Irish Community Center for, for their parking. We do have a parking issue. And I, and I'm gonna put on my other hat as a commissioner on the Human Rights Commission. We are only the temporarily able-bodied. So you need to have handicap available parking. And it can't be on, just on the street, cuz you never know when you might have a customer to your commercial space come in who needs handicap parking or somebody visiting one of, one of your residents. And so you need to pay attention to that. I'm also very concerned that, that you are basically paving over all of this open space. And so we'll have an issue with water. And is there gonna be like a secret review? A good one?
Yes, I, there is a secret review, yes.
Okay, because it wasn't a good one done for the ICC, that pit across the way there. And just so that you think that the, the space between West Union and Post Street is, is just dirt, that's actually open space and that takes in rain. I walk this area all the time with my dogs. Okay, so anyway, I wish you luck, but I would like it to be appropriate and take into consideration everybody. And just remember, we are all the temporarily able-bodied. So thank you.
Joanne, thank you so much, really appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
So. Wank? Sarah Wank, please unmute yourself, okay, there you go, you're on.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Say your name and address for the record, please.
It's Sarah Wank, I live at one fifty Main Street in Kingston. Can you hear me?
One what?
One fifty.
Any street? Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. As, as some of you know, I pride myself on paying close attention to what's going on in Kingston. But I only learned about this project yesterday from a front, roundout resident who got an announcement of tonight's meeting in her mail yesterday. Of all the people I've spoken to since, only one was aware that this project even existed. And that includes residents of the neighborhood. So I got busy.
I gotta stop here, Ms. Wank, because all neighbors of neighboring properties were notified by mail? And you know, this agenda's been on the city's website now for two weeks, which I know you check regularly.
Okay, but I'd like to finish my comments. Thank you.
Sarah, go ahead.
So I got busy and I watched the videos of the January eighteenth planning board meeting and the presentation that the developers made to the HLPC, HAC. The most interesting thing I've learned is that the reason this project is being presented as five lots is to keep the number of units in each building below the five unit cutoff for Kingston's new affordable housing requirements. That's why they're asking for so many variances with easements to come. This is explicitly stated on the video of the January eighteenth planning board meeting. Apparently, the developers didn't take the time to learn about our local laws before taking their project to the planning board. So the developers manipulating their submission, withdrawing their original request to eliminate lot lines in order to get out of having to include affordable housing. This in the midst of a serious housing crisis in the city. I think this manipulation deserves serious consideration from the Z B A and every other board that considers this project. There also seems to be a question as to whether the developers have submitted a complete application for this project. Certainly, the, the design, which is wildly out of character for the historic district, is far from complete. It is of the utmost importance that no decisions be made about this project in the, until the developers have submitted both a completed application and a design that is appropriate for one of the most historic neighborhoods in one of the country's most historic cities. Kingston is in the midst of a huge costly overhaul of our zoning code. Many of the problems that this project brings with it, for example, ignoring the pedestrian experience in favor of adding parking underneath one of the buildings could be resolved by complying with the city's new form-based code. Any approval related to this project in advance of that revision is foolish. And crucially, as tonight's meager attendance clearly shows, the public needs a lot more information about this project. I appreciate your time and yes, I know the information has been on the city's website, but that doesn't mean that people see it.
I don't know what else.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Sarah, for your comments, we appreciate it. Anybody else?
Anybody else from the virtual atmosphere wanna speak?
They're gonna tar and feather me soon.
All right, so that concludes our virtual comments. Okay, so the virtual world, that's all the comments, so now we can.
Okay, so with that, who would like? Could you come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Alice Arrington, I live on sixteen Hunter Street. And I just had a question, I just quickly looked at the, the survey and it seems that it's different than the survey that I want. And I, you know, when I go to my property. Arrington, A, R, R, Y, N, B, C, L.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to get that out. So you have a survey for your own property?
Yeah, I looked quickly at the survey, they had, didn't study it, but I just wanna make sure that that's more up. I don't know who I would talk to about that.
Yeah. You, you have a survey for this project?
For my property, my property, right next to it.
Okay. Okay, so you're saying that you believe there's a discrepancy?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So I just wanna make sure it's, it's absolutely now.
Okay. That would be, that would be something I think you would initially wanna talk to Eric about and then.
Well, it's a civil matter.
Well, okay, that, it is, it is ultimately a civil matter. If you were going to contest it, you would have to do it in court, but, but, but just to, just to determine whether in fact there are discrepancies. Maybe you could start by just having a conversation.
Okay.
You're, you're welcome, thank you for coming in and sharing everything. Okay, anybody else? Okay. State the name.
My name is Josh Fran.
Can you please spell your last name?
K R A M, and then B is a boy.
K R, K R A M. First name was Josh?
Yep.
And your address, sir?
I live at ten Hunter Street. So I live at ten Hunter Street. And I see parking as a serious issue because I witnessed it all the time. When this was used as a church, the lot that they're proposing to build on was their parking. That's what they parked them. So, um, and I don't know if you, if you've noticed, but there's only one side of the street parking streets. I mean, that's improved it.
Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, I just was getting some information. Would you, would you be, yeah, that sounds good. Um, would you be, do you mind just repeating that?
Well, I was just, I was just saying that like, um, when this was used as a church, the parking lot across the street was, I mean, the, the lot, I assume it's a parking lot, cuz that's what they use it for. So when they had mass or whatever they had, which was typically on Saturdays, this neighborhood would be packed with cars with that parking lot filled up, with that lot filled up. So, and it's just gonna be, like, I just see this as a complete logistical issue, parking. It's gonna be a problem for the snowplows, it's gonna be a problem. And that's, even if they get the bridge finished, you got emergency snow coming down, you know, with the street. So, I mean, in terms of parking, it's already an issue. And as a resident and as I, I built on my lot, which is coupled north down. I mean, I, I made sure that I had a conform to that, so that, by the parking lot, so. Just in terms of.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else? Just state your name and.
My name is Leslie Wongslay.
I just spelled that last name?
W A M as in Mary, S as in Sally, L E Y.
Your address?
So I am the owner of twenty-eight thirty Hunter Street and thirty-seven thirty-nine West Union. It's actually the green lot that you see right there. Where the, where there's a concrete pad. I'm the direct neighbor of this building. Perfect, I would be building there. So it looks a little misleading, it looks like they have a yard there, but that's my.
So it's a, you have a bird's eye view.
A bird's eye view, I think they'll have a bird's eye view of me, it's like towering over. This absolutely does not fit the character of the neighborhood. It's going to be so high and so imposing. As you mentioned, it does look very South Florida, I don't believe with all respect that was a compliment. It's complete, it is the antithesis of a historical neighborhood, one aesthetically. Two, I don't wanna live next to something that tall. I mean, how am I ever going to, one, have privacy? Two, have any type of continuity next to that? I mean, I would have to build like a motel eight next to that in order for it to feel even remotely appropriate. And the parking, there's no way this neighborhood can support this type of parking. It's, it's, it is not possible. And when I have, you know, talked about my proposal for, for my plans, it was very much, you need to have your parking, you need to have, you need to have, you know, clearance of your lot. So, um, I just don't see this type of development with the proposed variances being folded into the neighborhood seamlessly in any way. It's going to be in terms of the neighborhood in all, in all ways.
Mid-century modern architecture is not getting any love tonight.
Third one. Put together.
She covered your comment?
On most of it, yeah. The other part was like, our application was very severely advanced into, you have to have clearances. You can't build this thing that you had proposed to build because it's not going to pass cuz you need to have X amount of parking lots, X amount of space, X amount of height. All the things that now have been proposed, I would like to get, if they get. Because why didn't, why, why would we advise them to build?
I asked you if she covered your comments. You wanna go up there and talk, state your name and address for the record? Okay, go ahead.
Nelson, N E L S O N? There is, P S and V I T R S, I, L L A, R R, E A L.
What's your last three?
L L A.
R R.
E A L.
C A L.
E, E, E.
E.
E A L. It's hard to mask.
I'm deaf, I'm deaf in one ear, so it doesn't.
So, yeah, when, when we applied for, we came here to find out what could we build there.
Right.
We were stunned.
For your own property?
Yeah, for, for that property, that looks like. We also faced the fact that our neighbors on the other side built a property lot. So nothing we can do about that. Now they're building to a property lot. So we're sandwiched into.
Did they get a variance?
Yeah. We, you know, we were, we were advised to plan to ask for variances cuz we're gonna get it, cuz it's a historical neighborhood. And because the guys from the Historical Society, they next thought to us, so.
You know who decides whether you get a variance or not?
You do.
Yes. So next time somebody tells you that, that you know you aren't gonna get something?
Well.
Like a variance, you might wanna actually make an application and, yeah.
Yes, but, but, you know, chances are, you know, the variance exists for a reason. And that's for common courtesy to your neighbors and, and comfort, right? I don't wanna have their parking lot in my property. They probably don't wanna have us hanging around in their, in their property.
I, I totally, yeah, that's why, that's why we're here, to hear your point of view.
That's, uh, I would love to get the same variances that they get because it, it also increases my property value. I understand.
Are you gonna build one of these too?
Very possible. Why not? They, they are, right?
Right.
It seems to be profitable because.
Fair is fair.
You know, fair is fair, right? I mean, uh, if, if I can get a guarantee that I'm going to get treated the same way they get treated by asking for, I don't know, fifty-two or thirty or fifty-two parking lots and using, I don't know, basic math, whatever that was, then great, I love it. But that means that everybody else should get it too, cuz it is a community. It's not like.
I understand. Well, I think, without going out on too much of a ledge, I think the board understands where you're coming from.
Yeah, so that's kind of my, my concern is like, um, so, some people's dream house has been shut down. Also, more people is getting fifty parking lots on the street. Seems a little unbalanced, that's all.
Right. And you are?
My name is Mark Storella, my last name is Lakeport Storella.
All right, Mark, this is Mark. S T.
O R E. L L A.
Right.
And my wife and I own twenty West Union.
Twenty West?
Yes, which is an existing house residence that we live in. Uh, it's about, our side wall is about eight feet from the church that they were.
Okay.
So we're very much ready.
So you're slips?
Yeah, very much so, yeah. I'm actually excited about the development happening to the church that is rundown. I've been calling the building department, trying to get them to.
It's a little.
Raccoons that are crawling my yard. I think that should be taken care of before any applications are submitted to, for new developments, to clean up the existing. Just getting, beginning to save for the environment, there's things that fall into my yard. Uh, also, one of my concerns about the height, um, one of the angles that was not shown was looking sort of the opposite way that was mostly shown in the three D view. And it looks at. And it looks at the Cornell Park. It's a beautiful park, and I think this would really block a lot of view from it uh, for for the residents that live along West Union and Post Street and other streets as well as looking from the park. Uh, there's, I don't think it would block views from the park to the Hudson River, but there are very beautiful views that this would potentially obstruct them. I think that should be taken into consideration. That's all.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this presentation?
I, I just wanted another, because I don't think you heard, um, Alice Arrington.
Yep.
I don't think you heard that there's that, uh, there's only parking on one side of the street.
Yes, as a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Kitchen just brought that up to me. It is a very narrow street, West Union.
Well, the Hunter Street, one side of the the street is the wall, Cornell Park. So there really isn't parking against the wall. Do you understand?
Yeah, no.
So, so if, you know, I, but, you know, I I I'm not trying to down it, but really, and I, when the Irish Center was looking at the walls, I was. I looked, Hunter Street right now, that's a small area, it is open. But we go look down the other Hunter Street, uh, past, uh, past Word Street, packed. It's packed.
It's gonna move that.
When people come home at night, it's packed. So there really isn't, there's, there's no. There is no.
Right. Uh, parking is a common refrain. City of Kingston. We are a colonial city built before Congress and there's part problems and for centuries. Everybody's had a change of speed?
Yes.
I think, um, everybody who gave public comment of online and here personally.
Okay.
We are, um, City of Kingston, I think a lot of people are becoming, you know, aware that all all areas around here, but in particular, City of Kingston's going through some growing things. We are in the process of endeavoring to.
Want to go back to.
Improve our zone by going to a form-based.
So you're still discreet, then?
You know, underway, but it's not currently of the day. Could that currently that we have to make do with. Um, so. Okay.
People that are in the virtual world, like, to, to use this room.
Sarah.
Well, you just have to relinquish discretion. No, though, that just said Sarah Wink.
That's Sarah Wink.
Yeah, that's because you made everybody a.
Panelist, yeah.
Panelist, so now they're able to share their story.
Yep.
You have to close her out as a panelist? That's not what Sarah really looks like.
None. She morphed.
That is interesting.
I mean, they can still see the, the conference room is, is broadcasting, so.
Always, always looks like a.
Yeah, 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 that's us in the corner.
It does.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. I may, I just want to touch base on the height for a moment. Um, yeah, so is as much as I, as much as I'd like to have you do that, it's like the presentation is done and people, it's really, we can, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be here for a while with this, uh, you know, going through this. I would ask, first of all, I want to let everybody know that because of the complexity of of application and proposal like this, um, I'm gonna keep the, I'm gonna make a motion that we keep the public, uh, hearing open for written comment for the time being. And just, and just keep this, uh, keep this, uh, open and we're gonna have you back. Pardon?
You want to tell everybody how they can send written comment?
Yeah, no, I'll let you do that.
Risked her.
Top Hunter.
Huh?
Here's the top hunter.
Oh, okay. I'm giving up this job.
So you're not. No, you're not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So for the virtual audience, you can send your written comments directly to my email. And that would be E, the letter E, kitchen, K I T C H E N at Kingston-dash-NY.gov. And if you didn't happen to have a pen handy, you can call down to the Building Safety Zoning Department um, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 12, sometimes 12:30. And, uh, thanks for myself, zoning officer Eric Kitchen. And I could give you, uh, my email address and ways to contact me or send information.
By the way, anybody who gave, anybody who gave comment here tonight can also provide regular comment if you want. Detailed, um, I feel like you had somewhere to say. Okay, um, so we're gonna keep the public hearing open. I have a request, and I think it might be a really good idea. Um, because for me, like, I have to get boots on the ground down there and and see this.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I'm very familiar with the area. I've been to the park several times, you know, and and, but I have to see these lots. I have to see how they relate to other people who live there, their yards, just look at the church again and everything. Is it possible that we could arrange?
I'd be very happy to schedule a meeting with you to do so. I'll walk you through it.
Yeah.
And if you like, we can even float a balloon so you understand the height because the height is only for the elevator.
Study.
Yeah.
Goes away to my heart.
Yes.
Stand up a balloon. Is it, is it okay? I don't know, I ate funny pills today. If if we, if we're all there, we have a public.
So here the thing is, we we want to maintain, uh, no form. So if you guys, like, let's say, if you guys can go at separate, like, like, say, two members go at, say, noon and at 12:30, the other, you know, pick it up. So that we.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you'll have to kind of do it twice.
I'd be happy to meet with you at separate times and that's quite fine.
So let's, let's work out a a time. Um, Eric, do you think you could work out a time and then forward it to us with them? Um, where we would meet down there and for, we'll do the first half hour and then somebody else will do the other half hour. Half hour should be enough, right?
It's right there, yes. I think a half hour is probably more than.
All right, call me, call me Monday morning then, Joe.
Will do. Thank you.
Now we haven't taken a vote. I don't know whether I need to vote to keep it open.
Specificity with regard to written submissions so that there's a certain period of time that you just ask the public to submit it by so that you're not getting anything on the next meeting. Or I could get to you guys.
All right, when's our next, when's our next?
Well, since we had this meeting late in the month. Um, and I refer to council on this. Um, but our next meeting is scheduled for May 12th, which is only in two weeks.
Well, two weeks is is, let's, let's, uh.
Let's keep the public hearing open is usually for, what, the next meeting, the 30 days.
Yeah, it's so, you know, as long as you can get them to see everything and they comply, then they're fine with that. I would put it off for the regular agenda unless you guys would like to have a special meeting scheduled in three or four weeks, um, for this particular application, given the complexity of it. That's a citation for you guys to read, but it's really up to the board.
Yeah, two weeks is a little shy, and it will have to be less than two weeks or we'll be getting the comments. We'll be getting comments like the same day of the meeting, potentially, so.
What do you, Brian, your chairman?
Yeah, what do you guys think? We want to, it, this is, this is probably something we should have a separate meeting on.
I'm not opposed to that at all. I mean, I've been getting, getting complete public comment is probably the most pertinent thing.
Yeah, all right, so can we get another meeting scheduled for May?
Say, well, yes, so what I gotta do is I gotta go onto the calendar, speak to the city clerk and find a night and a time that's available where there's not any meeting going on, you know, type thing. So I gotta look at the schedule for the rest of the department.
Can we make a time to close the public comment, though, before that, right? So that even if we know that it's gonna be following week, we could pick some day. So let's close the public comment.
Here's, here's, here's the situation. May, I believe May 26 would work because usually the last Thursday of the month, there's nothing on. And I'll just verify that.
Okay.
So, so in May 26th, it's Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
Okay, so, um, so let's do a deadline of, uh, May 23rd for a written comment.
Okay, that's a Monday, yeah.
Yeah.
Written comments could be accepted until.
Uh, let's just make sure that everybody in, um, do you have a chat feature on there that you can?
Yeah.
I think everybody.
Is everybody?
They said the 23rd is reasonable.
I can't tell what they're chatting to.
It pops up on the screen. I just don't see. Comment hoping so people have time to learn more about this project and the 23rd is reasonable for the people in virtual land.
Thank you very much, whoever you are.
And Joanne Myers just agreed.
Agreed.
You guys just tell us what to do.
Yes, there you go. That was a yes.
Okay. So did we, when we take a vote, did we need to take a vote to hold up?
Table it?
What I would say is I would still take a vote, basically saying that, uh, um, to make a motion to, uh, maybe a public comment period open in this hearing.
I'll second that.
There we go.
Your motion was to leave the public comment period open.
Whatever he said, yes.
Discussion.
Till the 23rd.
To leave the public comment period open until May 23rd.
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
I second it.
I. I'm gonna stand this all the way through dates. Shaking his head, no, but you better.
I couldn't even hear what you said. I've got the whole.
You'll be letting us know all the dates.
All your.
You.
I, I seconded that.
You seconded.
We're gonna need a motion to go.
Yeah, we need a motion to postpone.
I'm most.
I'll second.
Eric?
Hi.
Good night, everyone.
We're good.
In our virtual world, we'll see you on the 23rd.
We're going to be done.
Who's Saturday?
Motion.
Yeah, we're just Mary. I.
You seconded.
I.